Congratulations to the flagrant of the United States of America. Consider Republic, which is states, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the vision of justice for all.
Just as a side note, I was very pleased to hear that Channel 9 is now going to start its broadcasting in the old traditional way, playing the national anthem. Congratulations to Channel 9. Mr. Castilia and Mrs. Delcante will not be joining us today. We have a motion? Yeah, we have. Any motion to approve the minutes?
Is that mean it's a motion?
Is that a motion market? It's not like you were real complaining.
I'll second you.
You have a motion and second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So our first resolution is to increase petty cash funds. Probably better that you explain that. It's a fairly simple explanation.
Yes, this is more things in our department to do. And I really want to let Nelson give more detail because yes, more things we do.
Well, they just put you on the spot once you got a dollar.
I mean, we've had the $500 limit for a long time, but last year, the state changed regulations on how we need to ship bats. We have to overnight them now. And this time of year, we're doing it almost on a daily basis. And we recently had a blue-green algae sample. And because they had to go on the weekend, it was nearly $100 to do that. And this coming October, the lead regulations are changing. And we foresee a lot more shipments of lead wipes. And we were nearly out of our petty cash a couple of weeks ago. So we just like to bump it up, just so we don't have that situation again.
I guess the question, $250 before we move it, does that income to you again? Do you foresee you have it? Well, we're back. I mean, there shouldn't be $1,000. I just don't.
Well, I'm making sure that we do pretty much weekly replenishments as far as vouchers to get replenished. And I really can't say until we start seeing what the results of the lead reduction threshold does to us. I mean, I thought we could bump to $1,000 if you want.
Well, that's the question. I just, it's a lot of effort, I guess, for $250. You have to come back.
Yeah, those would be great. I just, I don't know until the regulations hit, we start seeing what the result is. I can't, I can't say what it's gonna do.
It's, it's a replenishing function. It's not, it isn't to get you through the year.
No, no, it's just, it's just our cash on hand to make sure we do.
But I agree with Shane.
I would make a motion to amend, to change the petty cash to $1,000 again, because it is an enforceable account. But at the same time, why hand it off yourself if you don't have to?
I appreciate that.
Don't slow business down to have to get back to the lead suspension. For any of these. So I mean, I would make a motion to amend to $1,000.
Any discussion on the amendment? On the original act?
Aye.
That's kind of terrible. Tell us this direction.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the original motion?
Yeah, to original. You gotta get rid of the.
You got the amendment. So now we're gonna do the original resolution. But now it says $1,000. That's it. We're gonna vote. Unless you have a discussion. Okay? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Second resolution is reclassifying the position for the health and family program. There is a small change on there. If you go to the request, the lead budget form, it is changed from grade nine to grade eight.
Yeah, this, we have, we have this, as we know, have this healthy family program for two and a half years. And this person, she has been working as a healthy family program specialist and the bureau in the past more than two and a half years. And she has all required the training and doing very well. And our program, as you know, we got the state funding and expanded the program. And we will put more work on her. And in the past, she was working as a county clerk. It's all the job type. And this time, we see that's every work volume increased by a bit more. And yet, it's a profit with a correct title and compensation.
Motion, second?
I'll second.
For the discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close?
See, Roy should have stayed.
Next resolution is a new position request for public health technician.
Okay, the, the reason we want to create this new position is because we need to improve our environmental health program efficiency. And as you know, our program, environment program has only one licensed public health engineer. And he, he has done a lot and overworked and really something we need to reorganize and change our practice and make the program more efficient. And we calculated that his working hour is over 2,070, 2,700 hours. Usually 35 a week. Everybody, average, will work 1,800 hours. So for this reason, reduce some of this work and create this position can help him and make everything follow state laws and regulations.
Any motion for discussion?
I'll second. Jesse, you told me part of this is a result of the state review. What did they find?
What, 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 what does they find is because currently, our practice is he, he cannot do it and sometimes, some projects, give the project, and we have currently a title is senior sanitary. Go outside, locate the things and calculate the, locate the these documents and calculate these formulas and co-sign approval letter and state that, state to say, no, this should not allow. So we want to create this position is yes. This position will under, under the, technically under this engineer's supervision and give him easy calculation, give the technician cap out instead of use the, use the senior sanitary and instead the senior sanitary, because of her contribution, she signs the approval letter. So this way, make us follow the state education department law.
So the senior sanitation engineer or senior sanitary was doing, signing up on things shouldn't be.
She shouldn't, she shouldn't.
So this position to take over those duties as well, some of them.
Yes, yes, some of.
To reduce this up.
Yeah. And also, this, this, this position we locate is really to become our engineers' necks and eyes go outside more in the, in the specific direction can develop that, the project is progress.
I guess, in favor of creating the position, I just wonder, I don't see how we're funding that. Is that a different source of capital or something? Somewhere else? How are we funding the position? I would figure funding the position.
I was just asking.
Is there money at the same time?
No, we don't need to move money. And it's, it's budget neutral. And we, we do not request extra money because we, in our this year's budget, we have associated position and we are going to grade the bomb next year. So we have some savings and we have a pot.
So you're using what he is, but apparently it hasn't been used, but next year, you're gonna have to change it.
Right, so there's 51, there's enough money in 51, environmental to pay for this for the remainder of the year.
Yeah.
So that's why there's not a budget amendment. What you're doing is authorized the creation of what you're, or a position. So in 2020 budget, though.
It will affect 2020.
Sure.
20, 20, 20, 20 budget and as we worked, worked out and next year, sure, we have still two position pending, but as we submitted last Friday and 2020, our budget only 4,000 increase.
With this position?
Yeah, with this position included.
Oh, no, it's just not.
Included or not?
No, we couldn't. We're told not to include this.
Oh, not include, okay.
It might not be here. Been improved first.
But this is a, it says state or federal. Who reimburses it 5%?
State.
State, yes.
It said state, not federal.
So it's state 5% reimbursement.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just questioning that to him. I'm pretty good at this. It didn't print out a sheet. We were moving running from.
We're not moving. We're gonna clarify that.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Roy, could you slow down? Next resolution is budgetary modification for the cost of spraying to control disease area most humans. Actually, there's two more. Second, anyone? All right, as we all know, we're gonna pay the bill before we get the money back. So let's look at this.
Not being critical of the health department, tell me something. You think they should have been sprayed before. What's the process? Is it the state's holdup? Nothing to do with the department.
The state is very slow in issuing a public health recommendation. Share for us.
Right, I mean, you do this every year and everything is done and you put everything in place. Because I'm thinking that the one that also the people got, been with us, because nobody has so far, by now. But I'm just curious to know why it's such a delay. And as I say, nothing to do with the department. Absolutely nothing.
The delays, this year get state approval for imminent threat to public health took a few weeks. This, I can guess, this is my seventh summer, eighth summer here. And first time. And we, we check with them. And they say, oh, it's, it's in the process. This was within a week. And next week, early week, oh, yeah, we're getting there. And then to the end of Friday, we got it. Then they told us, yes, we, they say, we change our internal process. That's why it takes so long.
It used to be a day or two.
Yeah, usually a day or two. And the longest, I think, last year, probably like 10, 11 days. And this time, yes, two weeks. It's really long and.
Oh, I just think about the weather situation.
Yeah.
And can you spray? They spray always at night. Why can't you spray in the morning?
Because this kind of mosquito active in downtime and dusk time. So he, yes, it's easy for him fly back at night. Usually he fly back, it's already to this, uh, base, it's dark.
And you had, what, three weather delays after this was.
This was, yeah, two, two or three weather delay, yes. I think first was Thursday, Friday, and Monday, we sprayed. I think it was Friday, the morning Friday, yeah, the weather.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I want to make a comment and a thanks to Jay and Nelson, really, this time, yes, county don't need to pay and the state grant pay this. But this is a profit first time. Usually half, half. This time, yes, they work things out.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Then there's a small one here for the biological expenses.
Yeah, this, when I reported to you, talking about the disease, I would include that we end up, in our community, in our country, we have hepatitis A outbreak. And so far, we have a dozen identified cases. And each case identify close contacts. And all close contacts get vaccinated in two weeks. And some people have chronic disease and need to get immunoglobulin. Immunoglobulin is very expensive. And this modification is to cover the immunoglobulin purchase.
You know where.
Any motion to discuss?
I'll second. Go ahead, Margaret.
Are these people have any polypic problems or are they just having sex out there or whatever?
No, hepatitis A is a, is a disease, not a pass by blood, not a pass by sex. It's more oral channel. And this, this disease spread, yes, many of them are drug related. And this group of people get together and sip, sip the same cup of pasta around the barcoats and that's how spread.
Any other questions?
Are any of them in jail?
Yes, some, some.
Thank you.
Some people of after went to jail. So we, we had, we had, oh, going to be tomorrow, yes, have, have second shots in the jail.
And just to clarify, you're pulling money out of some travel lines and other things? This is existing funds.
Anything else? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A lot of time.
Pack.
You're up.
Pack, okay. I give to Sarah.
For?
If you have any.
Oh, for pack?
Yeah, pack need your approval and.
Yes, if there's any question.
Do you have any questions, comments?
The professional advisory committee that took place on March 21st, reviewed all of our services, gathered all our numbers from our copy program, our quality program.
Everybody had a chance to look at that? Do you need a minute?
There is.
I think over the years, it's gotten easier reading. I don't know if that's because of.
Thank you.
Your very good suggestion. We always put the acronym.
And I'll come back for this, it's appreciated. And I remember this a few years ago. Kidding me? You want me to understand everything? It's much easier.
Are you ready, Margaret?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My report?
It's your.
Okay. Yes, disease and let's start with hepatitis A. And I already briefly touched. And yeah, this hepatitis A outbreak is, as I said, in this specific population and with their behavior. And this is not just in our county and the Madison county, other than the community. These group of people, they're connected. And as I said, some in our, before or after in the jail. So the first time, yes, state, we work very closely with state and the state, yes, in the same cell, everyone consider a household a contact because they share a bathroom. So first time identified 19 close contacts. And then when things going on and the state advised us and vaccinated all county population. So tomorrow, yes, we're welcome to go. And this time vaccine, but cause the county and for this population vaccine and state vaccine for adults program provide the vaccine. So this you approved is for, for immunoglobulin and vaccine county don't. So this, this is my hepatitis A report. And go back to mosquitoes, yes, mosquito is endemic disease for our region. And I, before I came here, I located, yes, so far, the whole state got 41 positive mosquito positive, you know, as we go county, we have 30. And so it's really, yes, very heavy. And this year, because of a total process delay after the state and our spring was not as fast, fast as we, we want to do. Otherwise, yes, we don't have to wait until August, 20th, probably a week, a week, spring. And this, this was unnecessary. I, I look forward to next year and if state have this preseason regional meeting, I will raise this question. In the past, the state had this kind of preseason mosquito, four, five, they can gather, have meeting. And last year, this year, we never had it. So state, at the state side, yes, they have their staff changing and leadership changing. And so this communication channel, yes, I hope, yes, so I work each time and communicate with the people. I hope it can directly spread this sort of.
My concern was the fact that we met fatality. Year, last year.
No, our last case was 2014, a gentleman, 40 something years, so, yeah.
Elmer, sorry.
Yeah, Elmer, yes. This area.
They had a horse die this year, though, right?
Yeah, we, we have horse die. We have horse die and the more horse testing is in the pipeline, probably, yes.
So a doctor.
Yeah, still out there. And our message is always, yes, spraying not to cure all mosquitoes. Individual protection is the most important, most important. So.
Are you checking any other areas, that's code harbor, because it's raining all summer and areas that haven't had much ponds?
Yeah. No, this, where to spray, where to put a trap is, is determined by state entomologist. Because they know that ecology of this mosquito. And in this hot swamp, harbor swamp area and this, this kind of trees and this breed this specific mosquito. So we sprayed this collective box nearby area. So, yeah, we, we follow them. And our, our, our mosquito program, really, I think runs well. And when I just came here, first several years, I remember usually our program end at the end of August or early September, but recent years, and every year, we can have people last till middle of September. And this year, we will do the same. And I think our, our staff and especially our new environment health team, and we, we restructure, restructure the program in like the later two weeks. We have our staff own collect the sample instead because this summer, summer health, they go back to college. So we do our same. So this is mosquito. And measles, measles, state is still reporting, yes, measles still going on. And recent, most recently, it's outside New York City. And we have some measles. And most of the measles case are infants and unvaccinated children. So for this reason, state, you know, passed a law and remove religious exemption from school entrance. And this has some pushback, slightly some pushback, but really, this, this is a good direction to go and get all kids vaccinated unless some kids are small portion, very small portion of kids, they're medically not given the vaccine. So this, this more state, yes, passed the law and very quickly give us guideline. And we are working with the school. And I want you to say something to our preventive, really, they did a great job. And in the past, three, four weeks, every Tuesday, our lobby, it's always two line chairs and kids, parents come and get the shots ready for schools. And we also work with school nurse and deliver state new guideline, new law and the new guidelines to them. So it just works very well.
Has the Amish?
Amish, yes. Amish, no, not yet, not yet. And because in state school entrance for the public school, private school and parochial school, all need to get the same immunization standard. And we, our nurse manager tried to reach them. And sure, it's hard to reach, they're, they're very close community. And we work with a physician in class guy, Dr. Sullivan, and work with them. And still, state, yes, state, state is going to directly talk with Dr. Sullivan and convince Dr. Sullivan. And Dr. Sullivan has a good, close relationship with Bishop there. So we hope, we hope this way, we can go there. And this is in our list and we made to go there to deliver shots, yes. First, we can work out who is the Amish community.
What happens?
This, 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 this is really, really harder to reach community and, uh, yeah, uh, I, I, I just learned that legislative partner, yes. He gave us close, uh, relation with some, uh, Amish population and take at our message very quickly. It's very, especially summertime, mosquito, it's always some worry, some, uh, same, same you do it. It's very good for us. For this immunization, it's a bigger deal and, uh, I, I hope, yes, our department, the state department and the Dr. Sullivan. We can three party on the same occasion.
Maybe.
Okay. And, uh, about the disease, uh, last, last thing I want to report about the disease is flu. Mosquito not gone and the flu season is coming. And this year, we, usually in the past, we, we already get flu shots now or sometimes before September ends, we can get it. This year, we expect a delay and the problem really before end of September, we won't get it. And, uh, we already, uh, as soon as we get it, we will plan, uh, flu shots clinic, probably, yes, we hope before the end of September. Okay, and, uh, so this group and, uh, some, some public I really need to, uh, pass down to, uh, Judy here. And, uh, let me put the first, some easy one here. And, uh, we, our environmental health and public health education, uh, had a successful Harbor Fest. And, uh, Harbor Fest, this time very impressive. I know usually Harbor Fest and, uh, we have our people, uh, check this food event vendors Saturday morning. This year, when I was at the West Side, the Western Park and, uh, I was in the tent, this was like just a passable part, ching, ching. Almost done and I needed to get all our sanitary meeting over there and, uh, everything done. I said, so you don't need to hang some around for tomorrow? No, no more. This year very smooth and, uh, very, very good and now it's a month after. And, uh, yes, still I miss Natalie and, uh, use her standards after two weeks, no GI outbreak. Our sanitary success, big success. And this year very success is really efficient, very efficient sense of duty. And, uh, also at the, at the, uh, Harbor Fest, very interesting, our health educator put, uh, education material there. And, uh, one either, a bigger portion is healthy highway. And they asked people, asked about six hundred people. And, uh, as long as they are county residents and they have kids in elementary school, everybody knows healthy highway. And, uh, some people say, I never heard of a hea- hea- healthy highway from like L W, from New Jersey, from Colorado. So this, this really, this program is really, I think, very good merger in the community. That's nice. And, uh, health, let me, uh, finish healthy family before I finish it. And, uh, yes, uh, healthy family, I send an email to, uh, Mr. Part and request either in September or October. His fourth ninth school district superintendent have monthly meeting. I want to go there and talk with them, report to them and, uh, get their support. And I hope really stretch this program longer than three years. Because I hope we can budget by our, this ninety, ninety thousand dollars at hospital well and stretch. Because this really, it's, this is a good message. It's not look like in the Harbor Fest, we got the feedback is really, it's not to influence kids, influence family. This is what we want to do. So, so this, this is my report. And, uh, if you have question, okay, let me keep going on. And, uh, then, uh, I, 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 uh, let you know and, uh, only landfill next year is every five year federal government come to, uh, check it. Expect inspection every five years in the next year. So we are, we are, we are prepared this inspection and, uh, we still closely work with our vendor, B and L and monitor. So, and then about lead law and, uh, flood and, uh, are you ready to talk about it?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Judy Grandy and, uh, brand new director of environmental health. I apologize, I've never directed committee before. So, um, I have handouts for the committee members and I just assumed I could pass them out. So if I can have permission, that's mine.
Oh, you don't want me help?
This is for Margaret because she's on the end of the table. Yeah, you can hand out, uh, to the other committee members. The packets I prepared are background on lead poisoning, the effects of it. And copies of the new laws I'm going to talk about that will take effect starting in October. And then the handouts follow what I'm going to be talking to you about today and those are the loose ones. So, thank you for this opportunity to report on it. Um, the reason I'm here is that the health laws have changed. There's been legislation to change the level of lead in blood of children for environmental intervention, the mandatory intervention. I'll get down to those levels in a minute. But before I do that, I want to tell you what we do at the current level, which is only five, um, micrograms per decimeter of blood, of lead in blood. I am an environmentalist and not a medical person, so I may trip it over my words or the medical card. Uh, but I'm sure that public health nursing can, we would be willing to come back and do a more thorough report for you in the future. But this is just to let you know changes to our program, which are going to be big changes. So, um, in the handout that you got, the ones that are loose, you'll see environmental health lead program requirements. This describes what we must do for each and every child that has a blood lead level presently of fifteen micrograms per decimeter. We receive a referral from public health nursing, that's how we get involved. They get involved, uh, at ten and they do education and, um, schedule retesting for the children. But once it's at fifteen, the house has to be looked at, the dwellings have to be inspected and a risk assessment performed to find out what are the sources of lead, how are these children getting exposed to lead? So it's many pages, it's a ten day process. It's not ten days in a row, it could be ten days over a period of two months. It could be ten days over a scan of years. It all depends on how they move forward with removing lead hazards that we identify. And also, we cannot close a case, we cannot dismiss a child from environmental intervention until nursing can also do it. And this requires follow-up testing. So, uh, it, it's, it's a matter of several months, two, four, we can close one. So how do you find out they've got lead? The only way to find out is that they, they have to have a blood draw to test for lead in. Why would anybody do that on trial? Because the law stands now requires physicians to do an assessment and to test the levels that each is one, have to. You gotta have. Yes. And that's not to say it's happening all the time, uh, as, uh, families don't have health insurance or some families only take their child when they're sick, but go to the emergency room. And there isn't a PD treatment that's following them. So it may, it's not a perfect system. Yeah. And this, at least, um, the laboratory, yes.
Could I ask a question? Is there any kind of symptoms indicate anything?
Uh, sometimes there's no symptoms at the very low levels, but there are symptoms and in your packets I'm handed out. Um, there should be some symptoms in there. I'm not the nurse. Would you like to go into that?
It's, it's usually, usually neuro, neuro, uh, clinical neuroscience like speak, uh, have that, like this kind of very minor situation. And, uh, clinical scientist at the gun, high level will have a lead line to come back.
Behavioral as well, they're quality babies. Decreased graduation rates. Yeah, small size and very high levels, yes, stuff. That's all the nursing on there to find out where it's coming from. So this is our intervention process now, as I said, it's at level fifteen and above. And we average five cases a year. It could be as low as one and we've had as many as nine, but those are new cases. And as I told you, they can span over years. So the cases that were close the year before compound that nine cases. And we have fourteen, fifteen cases that we're following every year. We currently only have one lead risk assessor and that's Chris Wright. Um, previously before, um, my position changed, I was also a lead risk assessor. I'm no longer available to go out in the field and do this. So Chris is handling it at the present time. And what's going to change? What, what is this new law? Why am I even sitting here? There is a description called legislation and guideline changes for environmental health for lead intervention. Uh, in April, New York State Senate passed a bill and it was signed into law by Governor Cuomo on April twelve. It's protecting our children from, uh, lead poisoning by lowering the level, the statutory level that defines elevated blood levels. Now CDC changed that level a long time ago and I believe in two thousand twelve, uh, it went down to five by CDC. Mayor is lag behind and we're still doing that ten for nursing, level fifteen for environmental. So this law is going to put both environmental and nursing down to five. Then to conform with this requirement, that law says that the health department must develop implementation procedures and amend part sixty-seven of title ten to also redefine elevated blood level to level of five. So this is happening, it's open for discussion. We don't believe anything's going to change. This will take effect October, just one month from now. Problem is the state has not given us any guidance so far. They are reluctant to answer our questions and, uh, you think, well, maybe they're high up and maybe we can't communicate. Our regional lead coordinator, she's from family of Oswego. She works for the state and she has now been given this new position and I have contact, in contact with her every week. And I've worked with her for fifteen years. So we have a good relationship and as of last week, she said, I have nothing for you. I have not been trained, I have not received the guideline. So this is where we're at and I need to, to report to you. The law will take effect hundred and eighty days after April twelfth, which I believe is October ninth. And services must be provided to these children. So we have a choice. We can ask for more funding for environmental health, increase our staff, increase our funding and get additional equipment to go out and test for lead. The child with a level of five is considered the same as a child with a level of fifteen now. They get full services starting in October according to the law. That's our dilemma. So, um, we initially thought we needed three more staff, but with a lot of planning, we decided two more. One public health sanitarian who can become a full red, lead risk assessor like Chris is, get the EPA training. And then one public health technician. And that person, uh, would do the technical book, more elementary parts of the lead inspection. They can do the dust sampling for initial, how much lead is in dust for, uh, dwelling where the child lives. Um, and then they can also do follow-up with contractors who are out there. Yes.
I guess I have a question for Chris. How, how do you get what that is? Because of a, like a blood test and then all of a sudden elevates to, hey, now I'm going out to that place or is it? So that's, that's where.
Yes.
Like, hey, I gotta, now we're going to check up for that.
So we'll receive the referral in tandem. We'll get it at the same time, at five.
Is there, do you, do you see a, I guess I'm wondering about the old municipalities, right, the old cities and villages?
Yeah.
Towns and stuff all consistent that then do you see, is there any progression? Are they working with city code and stuff like that or do they?
That's where we plan, uh, kind of a.
Especially now.
Yeah, because that would be more. Schools right now is going. Facing certain items without, even say about. As a better measure, that is sort of, uh, what I'm able to try and get around these officials and have these discussions.
Especially if you see a pattern, you know, the old, old stats, you know, when they're prepared with their own standard, you can tell in real town.
Yeah.
And it fits a similar pattern, you can relay that information.
Yeah, based on. Based on some research I did, uh, because there's a certain portion of houses that, how we, that falls in that, that's the eight category. Yeah, that's still a capture. Fifteen is a bit more obvious for some reason, especially in the old, what's the mission policy?
Thank you.
So this, this, this testing is an automatic testing? It's part of a child's blood work?
Should be, yes. In the ideal world. In the ideal world, physicians are supposed to. Sometimes they do an assessment, they know that the child lives under the dress that is new housing. And they may not request the blood draw to do a confirmatory's, uh, level. So, uh, they don't take into consideration the child could be babysat at a relative's house or go visit grandma and grandpa's farm where there could be a lot of lead present. You've been playing outside in a park? Yes. Soil, uh, water, we do all this when we look at what we do with our assessment, we test the water in the soil, the lead paint with our XRF device. And, um, the dust, the levels of dust, because as lead deteriorates in the paint, it starts to get chalky and creates dust. And that is a big cause when the windows open and the dust is blowing off the windowsill, the child's on the floor. Between the ages of one and two, the first thing they do is put everything in their mouth. They often eat off the floor and they drool and they touch the mouth. So it's going from surfaces to the mouth. So what we do at our initial visit is interview the parent. We tell them what to do, whether we know there's lead there or not, because it's our initial visit. It's how to properly clean, do wet mopping, wet dusting, leave surfaces, your horizontal surfaces until we can find out where the lead is located. And with the risk report, they get, uh, a very detailed report with the XRF, which is an X, X-ray fluorescent device, measuring the amount of lead in paint down to an eighth of an inch, which is several layers. Because as we know, it chipped the wall, a couple of layers come on with it when it chips. And you're now exposing the lead hazard. So we identify where it is under paint that's intact for future reference. And we identify where it's disturbed, where it's um chipped, peeling, uh just in old shape and chalky. They get that report as well as the water, the soil and the dust. So it's a good report for them, but we start right off telling them what telling them what to do. Run the water for a good one to two minutes for cooking before you use it to prepare food. Run it for one to two four minutes before you prepare for meal. So we're doing these interim controls until we find out what's there and we continue interim controls until abatement or removal of lead hazards cannot happen.
So I I I just have to say this so that it's it's out of the table, because there's a couple of major concerns. One is, you're starting program in October, but they've not really given me a lot of guidance on it. The second one is, once again, this gave me work in all of its grace, putting money in other places. Has decided to not lower it a little bit at a time, but to drop it down to one-third of what it was and then say, oh, by the way, you've got to pay for this. Because there's no money following the bill. And that's that's a major concern. I mean, a county for us, I can't imagine what the city of Syracuse is going to do here. You know, I mean, you're you're talking about two positions in a county with large population and equipment. Then you've got to, I mean, you've got a plan put together for where this is going to be as a cost for us. To their twenty twenty budget.
Yeah.
I gotta pay for this from October through the end of the year.
Uh, this this is it. This this will be, uh, firstly, yes, go back a little bit. And uh, state uh, state uh, yeah, uh. Nice, sorry, uh, New York State County Official Association and estimated. The whole state lower this level will cost thirty-three million dollars. And the state are putting into budget nine point six million dollars, less than a third. And all the money look like all hold at the state level. Because in the uh, this was middle of August, right? And the state had a statewide phone call with local health department heads and the environment and health director. And the state clearly said, don't expect the money. Local county health department, expect money for lead program. You run your own. And yes, this this is challenging. And if you look at our neighbor Syracuse, they have bigger advantages than us. Because in the past, past, I think, probably at least six, seven years, they run state healthy neighborhood program. Healthy neighborhood program have lead components. And we, Chris and Judy, I discussed several times. Every year we saw, oh, healthy neighborhood grants, let's try to apply for it. We read it and then we discuss it. No, this is not apply for us. Why is because they're all the house all concentrated. One technician go out half day, probably can test three, four houses. For our technician, drive half day, test the two houses. So we we never applied for it. So for for our neighbors, they have this advantage. We we have this advantage in the area. And also talk about uh this. Uh, lower the standard. And Chris already said, and I touched it. If fifteen, it's very easy to spot it's lead issue. Even lower to ten, it's harder to spot where it is. We need to locate their food, their uh spicy seasoning and locate their toys, their cosmetic materials. It's a huge amount of work. And this at the uh health environment side, at the nursing side, yes, increase the home value. But yes, stay lower a bit standard and we don't need to have our R M go out. So this uh Judy already put into plan and our technician, our secretary will go out. If they're level at above fifteen still, our major students will go out.
I have a lot of respect for the for the process. Because I think I'm concerned about the fact you got, again, two forms. You got a program that you don't really have all the directions. And you've still got orders a year to go through that, you know. Are you going to be able to do this with the money that you got? Uh, I understand it's going to be an extra, but we heard that when you when you mentioned this before. Matt, I get a little bit concerned over the fact that we can throw fifty million dollars at the fair and not create parking. And then throw a program out that's health related to the whole of the whole state of New York. And say, okay, whatever money we're gonna put into it, we're gonna keep it for our part of what we've changed, but not for the what we use. You know, we've done some amazing things in this county, in this side, size. The healthy family, we've done the tobacco, my baby and me, we've done the the food thing, green light, red light, yellow light. I've heard myself in restaurants, you know. For a county this size, we are, we are well ahead of the curve. And I think we're gonna see amazing changes as this goes on and becomes generational. But to do this and then say, oh, yeah, by the way, now we want to do something, but we don't want to fund it. Um, is a major concern. So do you have a plan to get you through this next quarter?
Well, we're told that there may be an algorithm that the state comes up with. It's all may and anything can happen that uh at certain levels like five and ten, um, they may. The time periods for when we have to follow up can be from ten days right now, ten working days, down to twenty-four hours, depending on the level at fifteen and above. They may allow a thirty day, which would allow us to live till next year. Uh, the state is also going to give us thirty-six percent reimbursement of our expense. Um, beyond the lead lead grant. Our lead grant is not going to be increased. That's around fifteen thousand, fifty-four thousand, somewhere around there. It doesn't pay for everything we do now. It pays for a good part of it that we were told would not increase even next year. But they will reimburse thirty-six percent of what we come up with. So uh, we'd we'd need to.
But still, it's under sixty-four percent of two new employees.
Are you planning to hire the employees this year or January one?
Yeah.
So it's. So you're trying to do some existing staff through the remaining year.
Yeah, uh, we we think this year because still for clinicians, they have a time to pick up diligently testing kids. So we 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 look at this will be a time facing and they need to test, we will increase our volume. So this is two months window and probably, yes, we can hold it out, put into next year's budget. That's why we have, you look like it, yes, we have a gap, but actually.
Well, that was a little color back.
And this this is the one reason. And the other I want to correct a little bit probably is Jan and Nelson can bet help me. Don't think about the state that say give you thirty-six percent reimbursement. Because this money is Article Six money. Article Six money stated, give us money and they matter because lead program add more. Article Six money, same amount of money. You spend more money at the lead as a program, less money, right? Can I say that right? No. Because they they still, they say same amount of money, not to increase Article Six.
The Article Six is a base grant of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reimbursement. Once we hit that base grant, all additional expenditures are reimbursed at thirty-six percent. So basically throughout the course of a year, our Article Six expenditures average at a seventy percent reimbursement for environmental health. And that won't change with this because there's not a top limit. It's just that six hundred and fifty thousand is reimbursed a hundred percent and then additional is thirty-six percent.
But because this last quarter, this last quarter will probably likely just be reimbursed at thirty-six percent. Because we've already hit our six hundred and fifty thousand at a hundred percent.
For the last for the last.
That's correct.
But next year.
But overall, over a year span, it's about seventy percent, sixty-eight to seventy percent.
I I just want to make sure that on October ninth, if you don't have direction from the state of New York, that you all gonna show up and work.
I guess just a good question. Chris, is your training that you have to be the lead assessor to go to the.
Yeah, I've been doing this for a couple of years.
So are you the only one that had? Getting prepared to have more, I would assume, you're gonna need to have more, you do those trainings and skills sets soon. Or in this last quarter, getting prepared for January one anyway, even if it's not Wednesday or Thursday.
We have this position in the twenty twenty budget. And we also included uh training for uh lead risk assessor in twenty twenty budget.
You're not planning on doing?
No, uh, uh, to this point, just still, we we ask Judy to get keep her certification. So this is our, like, duty. Because get 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 the new people, yes, let them get used to it, but it still takes time and it's.
So it's gonna be a wait and see on my part as we go here.
Right.
But if you don't have a guideline, you know, they they technically come out with guidelines and saying, the family was at fifteen. And now the new rule is five, we've got to consider there. Under the new guidelines also.
It does sort of seem like a sort of a my best of the best. Quite their child is a sore house, but that was there specifically then. Someone's in our program now, if if someone's uh below that fifteen, that would only be involved in. They don't get tested. November, December, they're not gonna be captured with this law. So not gonna go back to other examples, this is twelve. Now I have to do this, but as soon as I get tested, it's a three-month cycle. And then they come.
But the remediation is still the same.
Process is still the same.
Anything else? Okay, continue. Thank you.
Okay, where was it? Okay, in addition to the level being dropped by uh the the governor and New York State Health following in suit. Um, the Department of Health guidelines have changed where we no longer follow child up to age six, we follow Halloween up to age eighteen. So that would be more work. But this is already in effect. We're already doing that. Um, and there are ways that children can get poisoned at older ages, lead sinkers when they're fishing, doing renovation work with their parents. There's lots of ways that we can expose. Um, also, the EPA, starting in January of twenty twenty, are dropping the lead dust action levels, the lead hazard definition. For clearance and for dust sampling. Right now, floors can have forty micrograms per square foot of lead and still pass. It's gonna drop down to ten, so it's gonna have to be an even more stringent cleanup process after any renovations are done. And then for windowsills currently, it's two hundred and fifty micrograms per foot square. That's dropping down to a hundred. These are gonna be hard uh thresholds to meet. So this will mean our pieces, there might be two cleanups as opposed to just one where we're going. But we do do a visual inspection first. We don't just automatically go in and take dust samples after renovations where work is done. If we see some chips laying around or we see dust, we say, no, clean up one more time, we'll come back. So it is possible that meeting these thresholds will be more difficult. And then finally, the lead in drinking water at schools program started a few years ago. And that's another thing that environmental was charged with, following and monitoring for compliance so that the schools are testing their drinking water to protect the children in school. Um. So we've got choices. We could fund it, protect our children, or choose not to fund it, which means we won't be following the law and not providing services that the laws as we have to provide. And we could face. The educational costs because when children are poisoned, their brains are damaged, irreversible. They cannot, they cannot go back and develop that part of the brain. So there'll always be possibly accused, let lower the jobs that they can qualify and in the education they qualify for as adults would be a more low-paying job. And so that would increase the possibility of public assistance for them that we have to come up with as a community. And finally, there's a direct correlation now between lead poisoning children and crime. Because it affects the part of the brain, stops the development of impulse control. And the understanding of consequences for their actions. This is ripe for committing crimes. So we might have the effect, uh, continued effect on our policing and jail population. If we don't do something now to stop lead poisoning at these low levels and mitigate whatever damage has been done by not having it happen anymore, starting remedial uh education and medical treatment. Treatment as much as they can be behavioral. Intervention right now by other agencies. So I think the cost saving of one family who doesn't get services could come back and sue our family and just one suit to bankrupt our family. So something to think about, it's not mine to announce, but we are here and we're here enough to do. Intervention that's required with your, with the help of the legislature and and your committee, considering what we're asking for and championing our.
Sorry, I want to cut you off.
Um, yeah.
Just a thought, you know, I mean, it seems, and I'm not saying it's going to be very reactive, it's what it is. It's shot, blood test. But there may be opportunities, I think, to be progressive and work with communities. I think it was about two years ago, when I actually signed up on this chair. You know, there's an M O U with a significant swing in the Department of Social Services who says, you know. If one of the clients were into new residents, that it has to be inspected and signed up or have to have a rental permit now, okay? So when the rental permit comes on, the code inspection. So just, I I think there's opportunities to get put into some progressive thing where you can say, all right, well, it's a county. Because it sounds like it's that terrible spiral of the home, people who are put in a home, they're talking about, you know, uh, future issues. It's related to things that could, you know, promote crime or other things like, so necessarily it could be an opportunity to say, hey, this one is looking at me. There's an opportunity to work with the social services and the City Code to try to come up with a plan and say, hey, well, we're gonna go in there while you're doing this. And I know that's more bodies and it's health and it's more money and stuff, but I don't know, it might be a progressive way to.
There's ideas out there.
Yeah, a lot of ideas.
But some other states do require this. Good. Not necessarily. This isn't the balance. And maybe it's um, what they're allowed, what they're required. It's it's something that would be done, but. That's another thing, so.
And we also review that list you're talking about, um, where the housing, Oswego Housing, sends a list of potential houses that are going to be rented in. We review the list for any open environmental case that we're investigating. So that's part of their process too. So we've already started that. And we also work with, we used to work with the city of Fols, and when they had the whole hug program down there, we worked really well together. But we do want to form coalitions and get together, especially the public housing inspectors and see what can be done on partnership level.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, we actually, uh, I say we, uh, our department, uh, downstairs, uh. Yeah, we, actually, I say we, our department downstairs, Community Office, Karen, and Sunya Swego, Housing Authority, already, we had the first meeting, talked, discussed environmental justice, and Judy will be following this. And this, I think, yes, we, community work together, and the first meeting was productive and really, I learned a lot. Like, you, you mentioned this housing, and I forgot what program, and if you use landlord, accept a voucher, and if you want to accept a voucher, yes, your lead poison inspection is included. If you are painted, contain lead, you need eliminate, then you can take a voucher. So, this kind of program, it's already start to work, and the way that's living, keep it close, working together, yeah, so just.
I have a question, who, who checks the blood for that stuff? Who, but, but where does it go? You take the sample, does it, where does it go?
The doctor takes a sample. Their primary care physician is responsible for getting the blood testing.
But he can do it right in his office?
The doctor's office does, yes. We don't do it at home, for the doctor's office.
They can do that in?
For the blood, yes.
Some can, some send them, give them a prescription to go to a laboratory.
Like a swerve on lab, yes, yes.
And then?
But it comes from the doctor.
And then any lab has to upload the results into databases that our nurses check on a daily basis, and that's correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Superdirtly.
Let's say once we talk about superdirtly, we know, quite, we've already had an initial meeting, and we had a meeting with Jeff over the phone, the promoter, Jeff Ackman. Things are moving very quickly, and I believe just about everything is in, except for the final escrow deposit, which will happen right before the event happens. The plan was extensive, they're used to it, they're very cooperative, and all agencies, city, county, state have, have been working with them. So, from my point of view, it's going very well, and I'm looking forward to another great year like last year.
Okay, my, my report, let me follow Judy's, and I, I circulated this feedback from Rottweiler Johnson Foundation, and I want to thank the community again, and last year, this time, I remember we came here and requested, set up a special project, coordinated, and applied for Coach Up Health, and, yes, we did it about three months, and we, we couldn't move forward, and we were expected, they can come and do a site visit. No, we, we didn't go as far as we expected, but anyway, this is a very good feedback, and front of page is there clearly, and the other page, you, you can see, and our community's strengths, and our community potential opportunity to improve. And I got it about a month ago, and before I share with you, and I already shared in the community, and I got very good feedback, and community, I, I sent it to our partner, applied for it, and other agency participated in the process, and two things, really, I think, community, at least, this agency, I contacted, look at, two things we need to do. One is, we need to build up a more cross-sectional partnership, and another is really, our community that policy change and the health improvement. So, this, this really, it, it's a, it's a very good feedback, and I share with you, and, yeah, if you have any thoughts, you have suggestions, instructions, let me know, and probably not discuss it too much, and if you have to read it, and I, 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 I think, yes, some, some agencies already said, Chin Chin hits to it next year. I said, no, let's take a break, and all agency, read it and think about it. Yes, we will pick up in one, two years, and let's try again, but not in a year, because really, there are opportunity for improvement, we still have some work to do, and really, our community did that, the right direction in school health, and so, can you give me another one or two year, and then let's see.
Is there any doubt?
Yeah.
Where are we in the three-year healthy highway partnership? Is this the third?
No, no, this is the first year, end of first year.
End of first year?
Yeah, we have two more years to go.
It's a first year.
Yeah, we, 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 we have two more years to go, and really, Nick, I, I tried to get the next meeting with hospital, come and see how we budget our money, because still about sixty thousand dollar in the, in the book, and I, I hope really, if we budget well, and extend at least one more year, ideally two more years. I'm trying to ambitions, but really, I.
Originally, but originally, it was three.
Three years.
Yeah, three partner.
Yeah, three partners, three years.
At thirty thousand a piece.
Yeah, yeah.
So, one year, and there's still sixty thousand, so.
Yeah.
Still progressing, close to where you mentioned, right?
So, yeah, this, this really, I, I think that the community has to look at what we have achieved, this healthy highway, this, this cross-sectional partnership.
Just because that one came out of grand, return, pulled out, it wasn't as much, it's the back, because that company, that, so. Anything else?
Okay, a few more things, and I, I, I listen in and let you know, and, yes, usually, the, the third part, I always talk about collaboration, and I want to say, our, still our collaboration, like, one good example is, we work with, with county jail and get things done, it's really, everything is collaborative, committed externally. And another thing I, I wanted to share with you is really, this, our engineer Dale, work very well with Dale, and avoid, avoid a potential disaster for, 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 for hubfest, really, because Lou, Louie's restaurant and state came and say, oh, you, you need to clean this pipeline, water, water tank prevent leak, high-level water, and they plan, oh, yeah, we will do it before, before the hubfest and get things done. They never thought about, in the tank, it's all smelly, yucky water, ruin your environment. So, Bill talked with me, talked with Judy, and then find, find out, yes, reach to Dale, and Dale reach to state, and state, in the use of prevent is our environment work again, and postponing. So, this, this really works so well, and a, a lot of people, I think, yes, they're happy, oh, we have a hubfest, and not realize, yes, our efforts avoid a big one.
So, this was the aqua dam behind the river?
Yeah, yeah.
The water that's filled with, goes ransom, they were gonna just open the valve.
Yeah, yeah, they want to open, open it, yeah.
The restaurant property, and they're running their own weekend, so, but, thanks to those two, they've got it to stop.
So, this really gets quite, quite difficult, you know, you know. Since all.
Do you have any other questions, Kevin?
I got one question, but they don't have a schedule on the timeline. How, what can we can do?
Is this, is not, is not taking the?
Yes. Every moment.
On this green algae, besides the fact, common or septic, but is there anything else that you've done with this green algae? Everywhere you go, you see green algae, everybody's palm, little stream.
Well, it's due to the nitrogen phosphorus load in the water, and it requires a still column of water, where when we have a hot day, when there's no wind, water doesn't move because there aren't springs, or it's not our great lake. We don't have any problems with our beaches on the great lake in Swego County there, but inland ponds, it's just, I think it's gonna be a fact of life. There isn't much that can be done, they try puddlers to move the water, we can't really add any kind of chemical to the water to kill this, which is basically bacteria, a good way of analogy. So, I think we just have to gear up to monitor it, and stop swimming, and make the public aware that pets should not go in the water.
I mean, everywhere you go now, it's all, I mean, I know our septic leak and go out and common or makes into a, all that sort of stuff, but, sucking around a bit better years, we didn't have all that. We had all the common or, we had septic before, and now this green algae is way overboard.
Right about that.